Well, all right. It's seven o'clock. We will call the meeting to order. We've got a long agenda tonight, so we're going to get going and stay focused, hopefully. Our first item is a public hearing on minor subdivision Windsor Abbott Revocable Trust, North Hayes Road. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor or against this? There being no one, we will close the public hearing at 7:01. Next item, public hearing, minor subdivision Windsor Abbott Revocable Trust Hicks Road. Is there anyone here who would wish to comment either favorably or against this? There being no one, we will close the public hearing at 7:02. Next item, public hearing, minor subdivision, Oregon Nancy Horgan Plainville Road. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor or against this proposal? Yes, sir. State your name, please.
My name is Robert M. Moiter.
Thank you, sir.
Any other information, my address or my telephone number?
No.
Horgan is a neighbor to me on the Plainville-I-Sander Road. I own 100 acres, State's 100 acres that's just to the north of him. I'd like to know a little bit more about where the subdivision's supposed to take place. He's got a big farm next to me. And I'd like to know where, what he wants to subdivide.
All right, well, we will, this is the public hearing to talk about it.
And I'm here to...
Later in the meeting, she'll show you a map. We would show you this map and discuss the project at that time.
Oh, maybe this will explain a lot.
It's going south of the existing house on Plainville. So it's a one new lot south of the existing house on Plainville Road.
Oh, just to the south of the house?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's not near your border, your border is over here.
Yeah, well, the way I saw it...
Well, we just have to, yeah, we have to notify you by town code. But yes, it's only one new lot to the south of the existing house.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. If you're agenda, well, I'm gonna do next.
That's it?
Okay. I don't have any disagreement with it. The ultimately, probably, that whole area will be developed. It's going fast. They won't get my farm, but they'll get his.
Anything's possible.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Oh.
No, no, I'm just sitting. Oh, he's just sitting. Teresa Carbone, I live on Plainville Road, okay? Now, because of this comment that they might be developing north, that means across the street from me, Horgan can sell too, right? Eventually. How do you stop somebody from doing something like that as far as residential? You really can't, right? Unless you bring up something like traffic problem, speed, that type of stuff.
Right.
Okay.
Right now, yeah, right now, all we're dealing with tonight is the simple one lot subdivision.
Yeah, okay. And that's not a prospect.
If somebody comes in later to try to do a minor or a major subdivision, there would be a whole process of public hearings and they'd have to do it according to codes and you'd have an opportunity to see them talk.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask what school district this is in?
This is Jordan Elbridge.
Jordan Elbridge.
Correct.
Okay. Where's the boundary line of Baldwin's Road?
I'm not sure exactly. It's north of there someplace.
Well, I can say...
Is it to Tater? I think it might go up to Tater.
Tater goes to Cato schools.
Or no, not Jordan, or is that Cato or is that?
Probably Cato.
That's Cato, okay. Not Jordan, it's Cato, Cato, sorry. I think that's Cato. Yeah, I'm not sure exactly though.
Where is Jordan Elbridge?
Now, the new residential part is going to be Jordan Elbridge.
It will be Jordan Elbridge.
And Jordan Elbridge.
Okay.
So the new one's going to be Jordan Elbridge.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, there being no one, we will close the public hearing. Our next item is another public hearing, minor subdivision Michael Carroll Kramer Road. Anyone here wishing to speak in favor or against? There being no one, we will close the public hearing. Next item is approval of our May and June minutes. Everyone board member have a chance to look over these two copies of War and Peace that Karen sent us?
Just talk a lot.
That was a lot of hard work. Thank you, Karen. What was that for? I make a motion that we accept the May 9th, 24 and June 13th, 24 planning board meeting minutes as presented by the secretary.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, or no?
I abstain.
That's right. Yeah. For June. Okay. Now, we are back to minor subdivision Windsor Abbott Revocable Trust North Hayes Road.
Hello.
Gentlemen?
It's a big one.
Don't print that sheet soon. I said, print that sheet soon. So there were two lots here. We're combining it and rearranging the future usage easement to the south of one large four-acre lot.
Talk a little louder, please. Not just to me, but for them.
Okay, so there were two lots here approved by the town with a easement right down the middle of the two, and we're going to reconfigure that to one four-acre lot and move that future usage easement to the south of that lot. And this lot will be located 200 feet from the north property line.
Is the easement shown on this?
It is.
It is?
Yes.
You got the Hicks Road?
This is the Hayes Road map. This is the Hayes Road map.
We're on Hayes first.
Oh, well, I'm talking about Hicks Road, so...
We're doing Hayes more.
So Hayes Road, three lots out of the...
I was scratching my head.
Yeah, well, that's why. Three lots out of six acres on the corner there. There is an easement shown on the southernmost lot for a future pump station for the town, and we will retain that easement until such time as the Melvin Farms property happens and we can do our little exchange there.
What do you mean that you retain it? You mean the easement's not being filed yet?
Yes, so the easement is going to be in the name of the Windsor Abbott Revocable Trust until the Melvin Farms project moves forward and the strawberry field land across from Abbott Farms is deeded to Mr. Abbott in exchange for the easement, then the easement will get filed with the town state.
So we did a similar thing across the road in that 64-acre parcel or whatever. We made an agreement with them on where they wanted the easement, and the town was in on that. And we sold the property, but we still owe them that easement. So at such time, we can hand that over to the town. The top two lots are the minimum size of 80,000 square feet, and we did that to give the lot that's going to have the pump station as much space as possible. And we anticipate the pump station to be on this...
Right close to the creek.
Yeah, yeah.
This one here. Yep. There's a creek right through here, so that's your low point.
This is the creek that winds around.
Yes. And from here, it heads to the river, and here it heads to the Way Street Plant.
Have any other questions at this time? I have a couple items I need to put on the record.
I think I asked this all the time. What's the distinction between a minor and a major subdivision?
Four. I'd like to read into the record the letter the planning board received from our engineer, Mr. Al Yager.
Hey, Jack, I'm going to modify this. If you don't mind, I'll read it into the record because there's a sentence that's going to come out about the easement.
Oh, okay.
And I'll reprint.
You changed it on me.
I did, yes. I've completed my review of the final plat for the above referenced minor subdivision prepared by CNY Land Survey dated May 22, 2024. As presented, the plat does not include the lot requirements in the AR-40 zone, and that is the end of that sentence. And all other requirements the town code here appear to have met. Would not be opposed to the planning board approving the final plat contingent on the revised map being provided on a revised map being presented that includes the lot requirements for the AR-40 zoning district.
So in other words, you're concerned about the easement, then?
Has been addressed by how they are handling it. That's fine, as long as there is an actual easement agreement. If you could provide a copy of that to the town, that'd be wonderful.
I'd like to read into the record the response from the Anadaga County Department of Planning. And I will just read the last page of this. And their recommendation was for what they call modifications. First modification, the filed subdivision plan must include applicable information to verify the viability of the proposed parcels as building lots, including building setbacks, driveway access, wells and septic or sewer systems, including required separation thereof, as well as any water bodies, delineated wetlands, buffers, or other natural features of significance on the sub. Second modification, the applicant must coordinate North Hayes Road access plans with the Anadaga County Department of Transportation prior to permissible approval of the subdivision to ensure the proposed lots meet minimum site distance requirements. Third modification, the Anadaga County Health Department's Bureau of Public Health Engineering must formally approve a sewage disposal plan for the proposed lot prior to department endorsement
So those would be added as conditions as well, correct, Jack?
Pardon?
Those will be added as conditions as well?
Correct. So we'll have four conditions? Does any board member have any other question at this time?
So we're going to consider approval with those as conditions?
Correct.
As opposed to getting those prior to...
The board can, it's up to the board. The board can withhold approval and ask for a revised map. Do we present it publicly before they end, or you can approve now?
Well, if we approve now with those conditions...
You would prefer that time?
Until the conditions are met, we have that approval.
Yeah, yeah, correct.
The last thing sounded like a recommendation. The other two were mandatory?
They're all modifications. They're all modifications.
They're all required.
Yep.
The interesting thing about the SUC or the Sanitar is we can't file the plats unless the Health Department signs them. So what they're asking for is kind of silly because you've got to go through the Health Department anyway to file the plats. So I'm not sure who would, the county's coming up with some of these requests, but I'm thinking they aren't sure what they're doing yet. Things are changing down there.
Yeah.
I think on lot two, you're going to have a hard time with site distance, aren't you? There's people that's what, on that road?
Forty-five there. I think you're okay.
Site distance is there.
Yeah, the site, I think you're okay. There's no trees or obstructions. I think you'll be fine. And the building setback line is not going to allow a home to be constructed to block the line of sight, so you should be fine. I don't anticipate a site distance issue, but the county DOT will need to actually say that, you know, get a letter out of them, and it shouldn't be a big deal. I don't anticipate them giving you any problems. It's just a matter of requesting that they review and provide a letter stating that all lots will be providing access.
So we can vote on, agree with those conditions, but before...
Jack signs the map.
Before anything is signed.
So he would have to identify where the driveway, the curb cuts are going to be for this, get the site distance approval.
Show where the septic systems are going to be, show where a well can go so it can meet the county health setback requirements, show any wetlands that are mapped, and add the building...
Plumley's almost done with the septic plants.
Yeah. Normally, that's always done, the building process. I don't know why they're making a condition now.
That's their...
That's their new...
That's their new thing, apparently.
Their prerogative.
Well, there's been changes in the Health Department as well, so that is, I'm sure.
And if they don't care where the driveways are, then it'll probably just be a letter saying there's no issues with site distance.
Correct.
But you have to file...
But if they care, well, then they're going to delay it.
Yeah, that's right.
You okay, Steve?
There's public water there because they said something about well. It's like, it's public water there, so...
Well, it sounds like modifications that fit a number of applications they're going to get, and it's written in general boilerplate, just to cover all aspects.
I would agree.
You're going to see that on the application.
When you go through, you'll catch up.
Yeah, we are.
The same modifications on the...
Yeah, on the other one, which is a totally different, so it is what it is. All right. Findings, an environmental assessment form indicates that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impact. There is a letter on file from Al Yager, Town Engineer, dated July 11, 2024, that has been made part of the public record. This application was forwarded to Anadaga County Planning Board for administrative review and recommendation, and that has been made part of the public record. This action is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. This action is consistent with the town's current zoning ordinance. This action will cause no adverse effects on the public health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or district. I make the following resolution. Resolve that having reviewed the minor subdivision application of Warren Abbott as to find on a map dated May 22, 2024, prepared by Doug Reeth, CNY Land Survey, for property located at 7484 North Hayes Road, tax map number 064 dot dash 03 dash 29 dot 1, Baldonsville, New York, is hereby approved with the following conditions. The three modifications as spelled out in the Anadaga County Department, Planning Department, letter, excuse me, letter of July 3, 2024 are three of the conditions. And the fourth condition, as spelled out in the engineer's letter, is the including the building lot requirements in the AR-40 zone. Those are the four conditions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye, opposed, or no? Resolve that in granting a subdivision to Warren Abbott is to be located at 7484 North Hayes Road, Baldonsville, New York, the planning board invoked its right to impose a fee of $250 per lot for three lots and new land for the development of parks, playgrounds, recreation, or open land areas in the town. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye, opposed, or no? State law states that the applicant shall file a final plan in our county clerk's office within 62 days from the date of the final approval, or such approval shall expire. The applicant shall also file one copy of the final plat with the I-Sander clerk's office. Thank you, Warren. Next item on the agenda, minor subdivision Windsor Abbott Revocable Trust Hicks Road.
Hicks Road.
Which we already had a brief explanation of.
So simplifying to one lot, the future easement to the south of it, 200 feet of open space You can see the dotted lines on there are the original lot was approved last year.
Was that subdivision that we filed?
Yes, it was. So this is, I believe, going in as an amendment to that. It's going to go in with the same name. If I got that right?
The cell tower is just a piece of lease?
Correct. But the request was made the last time we went through it to provide 200 feet of frontage so that if it became its own lot, it would be...
It would be coke.
It would be coke.
And what's that frontage requirement?
200 feet.
200 feet. But we show 150.
It's 150 and an additional 50 because it's a collect.
Because it's a what?
County road.
Collector.
Collector road. So they ask for the additional 50 in the AR-40.
So 150 is the real requirement?
In the AR-40, yes, but it's in the highway overload overlay control district as well.
So it's compliant?
Yes, it's compliant.
Because Hicks Road is a busier road than, they make the distance larger because they want the less driveways.
So if he was to divide this, that would be a compliant lot, because you're on that.
Any other? Al, you want me to read this letter, any changes to it?
Just asking for the building lot requirements is all we would ask, that the map be revised to include the building lot requirements on the subdivision plat.
I'll read it into the record.
Okay.
Dear Chairman Corey and I-Sander Planning Board members, I've completed my review of the final plat for the above referenced minor subdivision prepared by CNY Land Survey dated May 22, 2024. As presented, the plat does not include the lot requirements in AR-40 zone. All other requirements of town code appear to be of met. I would not be opposed to the planning board approving the final plat contingent on revised map being presented that includes the lot requirements of the AR-40 zoning district. I would also read into the, well, public record the comments from Anadaga County Department of Planning with regard to this subdivision, and I'm not going to waste time repeating what I've already read. It's the same three identical modification, so we will put them on as conditions on this one as we did on the other. Findings, an environmental assessment form indicates that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impact. There is a letter on file from Al Yager, Town Engineer, dated July 11, 2024, that's been made part of the public record. This application was forwarded to the Anadaga County Planning Board for administrative review and recommendation. That has been made part of the public record. This action is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. This action is consistent with the town's current zoning ordinance. This action will cause no adverse effects on public health, safety, and welfare in the neighborhood or district. Resolve that having reviewed the minor subdivision application of Warren Abbott as to find on a map dated May 22, 2024, prepared by Doug Reeth, CNY Land Survey, for the property located at Hicks Road, tax map number 071 dot dash 02 dash 53, Baldonsville, New York, is hereby approved with the following conditions. The four conditions are the three modifications recommended by the County Department of Planning on their letter of July 3, and the requirement that the lot requirements in AR-40 zone district are placed on the revised map. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
What's the 30-foot easement? That's to get to the cell tower or the 60-foot?
No, this 30-foot across the front of the property and then down the south.
Oh, there was a, yeah, there's an old easement that was filed, yeah.
That was drawn on there for the transfer and developments rates program that the town never voted on.
It's like conservation easement.
And so it never happened, but it's still on the maps that were filed. So we haven't decided to spend the money to pull those off of there.
Who's the easement granted to?
Nobody. Never happened.
Doesn't exist.
Doesn't exist. The town never voted on it.
But it's on the deed. Signed the filed maps.
Signed the filed maps. It's not on the deed.
So what does that mean?
Nothing.
Okay. Theoretically, you're trying to take it off, but because there is no deed for it, but the record is on the filed map, so it's one of those, what kind of liability do I want? I'd rather leave it on so if they come back... So it's in a map, but on the deed, there's no reference of an abstract as to who it's granted to.
No, because it was never closed.
Okay. Thought same, doesn't it?
Okay. Good catch, though.
All right, we had a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved. Resolve that in granting a subdivision to Warren Abbott for property located at Hicks Road, Baldenville, New York, the planning board invokes its right to impose a fee of $250 per lot for two lots and lieu of land for the development of parks, playgrounds, recreation, or open land areas in the town. Fees and lieu of land for public use not assessed was paid under the previous application. So we'll all know it. All those in favor? Opposed? Aye. State law states that the applicant shall file the final plat on the Anadaga County Clerk's Office within 62 days from the date of the final approval or such approval shall expire. The applicant shall also file one copy of the final plat in the Lyssander Clerk's Office.
I'm curious. What does that mean when you're talking 62 days of final approval?
So that's the date that Jack signs the map. 62 days is on the date that Jack signs.
Get it clear.
Until, until I sign them, that, that clock doesn't start.
So 62 days has no bearing on these modifications?
Yeah, correct. Uh, next item? Minor subdivision, Nancy Corrigan, Plainville. You got a map, Steve?
I have.
Go ahead.
Okay. We were in here, I don't know, about a year, year and a half ago, and we did a two-lot subdivision on this parcel. Um, it was all of what's labeled as Lot 1A and Lot 3. That was one of the original lots. And then the Lot 2 was the other original lot. We're now coming back to cut out Lot number 3. It's 3 acres. There's no water or there's no sewer. They're gonna have to do the septic system. That's in the process now. Site distance, there's not a problem there. Can see both ways, so required distance. Still gotta go to the county, obviously. Pretty much it. There is an existing driveway, but I don't know if the county will take it. It's the farm, farm entrance into the field there. They may want to move, but we'll deal with that with the county.
What's the dotted line represent?
These are old lot lines, way back.
Well, I will. I'll read into the record while you guys are looking at that and thinking.
Excuse me. Um, is there an opportunity for anyone to ask questions about it? Is that in the discussion session, section?
Uh, we, we already held the public hearing half an hour ago. Were you here?
Uh, no, but on the docket, it said 7:10 and I was, was here by then.
We started early.
To be fair.
Our letter said 7:10, not 7:00.
I know. We, we assume there's going to be some discussion, but sometimes there isn't. So we don't just sit for 10 minutes and then close it. We close it and move on to the next one.
So why not put it on the letter that says, "Meeting at 7 o'clock" instead of 7:10? You know, because this gentleman was expected to come here at 7:10 to speak, obviously, and he was here on time. And he never got an opportunity to speak.
Yeah, well, I'll give him an opportunity.
Okay.
Okay. Let me, let me, let me finish reading these seven. This is the letter from our Town Engineer, Mr. Yeager. Dear Mr. Corey, Chairman Corey and Lyssander Planning Board members, I have completed my review of the final plat for the above referenced minor subdivision, prepared by CNY Land Survey and dated May 24, 2024. The plat, as presented, appears to meet all of the town and Lyssander Code requirements, and I would not be opposed to the planning board approving the final plat at this time. This was sent to Anadaga County Planning, but they exempted. So there was no response from them on this. Your question, sir?
Thank you. My name is Emmett Simpson. I own the property across the street on the southern end of the proposed lot.
Right there.
And my only concern is that the location of the driveway not be put in front of a building so it's not shining lights into people's homes at night, if that's possible or consideration be taken for that.
That would come in under the site plan, I believe, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
It wouldn't, it doesn't really have anything to do with a sub. It would have to come in when the site plan or when they apply to build a house. Code's office would have to deal with that.
Yeah, we're, we're just subdividing the land now, but that's a good, that's a good point.
So, uh, just my, uh, so who has contacted or to, to let them know of that concern or consideration? Like, do I contact the planning board?
So Karen will note, the Karen will note this in the, uh, minutes, and the minutes are forwarded to the code enforcement officer who would be reviewing the, uh, site plan for any new home home that was constructed there.
Sorry, didn't, can you repeat that for me, please?
Karen will do minutes from this meeting. Your comments will be noted in the meeting, meeting minutes during the public hearing. She'll probably move them there. Um, and then the code's enforcement officer, when a building permit, when somebody buys a lot and wants to build a house on it, will, uh, review the map and the minutes from the subdivision prior to issuing the building permit.
So at, at that time, you can find out, like about the buil, like about the building?
Well, they don't have to come back to the, the, the planning board. No, for a single-family home, you don't have to, that's all handled through the code's office.
And, um, well, just my other concern is if I was on vacation this week, I got that letter on Monday, I wouldn't even be here at this meeting. So, um, maybe consider giving sooner notification so people know about the meetings in case they're away.
It's on the website. It's only a courtesy that the letters go out.
So you, you just find out when they start breaking ground? Is that how it, it can work sometimes, or?
No, because you can't break ground until you do the subdivision.
I mean, I appreciate the letter, but...
And quite frankly, if somebody bought the whole, uh, how many acres is the larger parcel?
Uh, 41.
If somebody bought the whole 41 acres, there wouldn't have been any public hearing. There wouldn't have been anything. Somebody could have just built a house. They wanna come in with a, uh, building permit application and they would have been getting issued a building permit.
I'm, I'm learning, so, okay.
Yeah.
I appreciate it. Thanks.
You may wanna check the codes because quite honestly, there's residential parcel across the entire frontage of that. So inevitably, there's gonna be a driveway entrance that will be opposite a residential home. So.
Oh, yes, I know.
Yeah.
Which, uh...
I mean, we're not here to tell you that what you're concerned is it's not gonna happen.
And, and, and the bottom line is there's no restriction in the code. That, I mean, as long as it meets the site distance requirement and they are issued a permit from the Anadaga County Department of Transportation for the curb cut.
Yeah, they could do it as a courtesy or they can do whatever they want.
Correct.
What they recommend.
Correct.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for taking the extra time.
Yep.
Hi. I also was here at 7:10. So I guess I was a little late for this Nancy Corrigan. Where do we find out where the easement is going to be? Where, we live on the farm north of, well, it's right next door, the acreage that's being built. But where is the easement?
Are you talking about the driveway?
I'm talking about the, where's the water? The runoff? Where's that gonna be?
Just saying, is it coming off the property as it is now? Are you up, you up here?
Yes.
Yourself?
South is it? Yeah. The big white, yeah.
All right, so you're down here then. It's not gonna change from what's there.
Okay.
If, uh, depending on, you know, what they build, an Airiftnic mansion, you know, they may be required to do something. But again, that'll go to the site plan. For the lot, or the, uh, yeah, the site plan.
I ask one more question. What about, how is the farm equipment gonna access the lot?
They have access up off of Tater Road now.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No. Ma'am, could we get your name for the record? What was your name, ma'am?
Barb Holdridge.
Thank you.
Findings. An environmental assessment indicates that this action will not result in any significant or adverse environmental impact. This action is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. This action is consistent with the town's current zoning ordinance. There is a letter on file prepared by Al Yeager, Town Engineer, dated July 11, 2024 that had been made part of the public record. This action did not meet the criteria for referral to Anadaga County Planning Board because it's less than three lots. This action will cause no adverse effects on public health, safety, and welfare in neighborhood or district. Resolve that a public hearing having been held and there being no findings or grounds for decision. Contrary to the laws and regulations of the town of Lyssander, County of Anadaga or State of New York, final plat approval for a one-lot subdivision by Nancy Corrigan for property located at Plainville Road, Memphis, New York, tax map number 036 dot dash 03 dash 02 dot 2, as shown on a map dated May 24, 2024, prepared by Doug Reeth, CNY Land Survey, is hereby approved. There are no conditions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved. Resolve that in granting a subdivision to Nancy Corrigan for property located at Plainville Road, Memphis, New York, tax map number 036 dot dash 03 dash 02 dot 2, the planning board invokes its right to impose a fee of $250 per lot for one lot and lieu of land for the development of parks, playgrounds, recreation, or open land areas in the town. State law, state law states the applicant shall file the final plat in Anadaga County Clerk's Office within 62 days from the date of final approval or such approval shall expire. The applicant shall also file one copy of the final plat with the Lyssander Clerk's Office. You have it?
I did.
Okay.
We didn't vote, though.
No. Not yet. We didn't vote.
On the parks? Resolution?
Oh, we didn't.
I seconded it, but we didn't. You just kept rolling.
My, my bad. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think from now, from now on, just for the public's information, and I understand the confusion. Karen? I don't think we ought to put times on those public hearings.
Well, normally, the representatives get up and present the application. Then you open it to the floor for the public. So it normally takes a good five minutes.
Yeah, well.
And we'll just...
My, my, my advice is 7 o'clock is the time to be here. Sometimes these things go very fast. And it's not on purpose.
My first time in a meeting, like, in one of these meetings. So thank you for your time.
No problem. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Next item, minor subdivision. Michael and Sharon Zimmerman, Kramer Road.
Good evening to Corey and me, James. Um, we were here a couple weeks ago. Actually, a month ago, right?
Yeah.
For this lot. It's a two-lot subdivision on Kramer Road, River Road, over there on Seneca River. You need one? I'll get it for you. So this property is zoned mostly R20 and it also has a NY SFE on it. Seneca River, Kramer Road, River Road. This right now is one 5-acre piece here. There's an existing house and pad and occupation on this on the north area. There's an existing house and pad and occupation on this, on the north area. We're looking to carve out this three-point-three-acre lot here that runs on Kramer Road, pretty straightforward and pretty basic. If there's any questions, I'd love to answer.
Are you now creating this little corridor that runs between these parcels?
Yes, we are. For some reason, the current property owner here wants to keep and control the corner, for whatever reason. There's not enough room to build or anything, do anything with it, but they just, for whatever reason, want to keep it.
Can I ask a question? What is the plan for building on this site?
I'm going to put a barn on it, like a hobby barn. I own the house directly across from the site on the south side of Kramer Road, on Mistico. So my bank account banks right up to that property, and I have a very residential-looking barn on the other side from my bank account. There's no other plans for the property at this time.
How large of a building is it going to be?
Probably sixty by forty. It's somewhere in that range.
Small.
But you might develop something further?
Well, I mean, I plan on living in that Mistico home as long as I can, and if someday I want to build a ranch or one-floor home next to the barn, I may do that at some point. There's no, I have no further plans at this time.
Can we get your name for the record, ma'am?
Alice Cancelo.
Thank you.
I will express that I don't care much for that little corridor and that little piece, and if there's any way that it's against the code, I will go against it. This stuff just creates problems down the road.
I don't believe it's against the code. I agree with you. It's kind of weird, but the current property owner wouldn't let us do it without keeping that. The current property owner is dictating what he keeps and what he sells, so the current property owner is dictating where the property line goes, and they specifically wanted to do just that. I don't disagree with you. It's very, it's an odd little thing, but...
It will be someone's headache in the future. Without a doubt.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
It'll be a headache for someone in the future, for someone in Ailes Rule, or it's just a bad...
Yeah, the current owner just wants that corner. He feels he's got some control over the road with the corner, and I, we, and Tim explained to us that, you know, you can't just carve out a lot that size, because that wouldn't be within code. So the only way to keep it in code was to attach it to his other property. That's why the corridor is there.
Yeah.
We did attempt to go down that road. I really didn't care if I had the piece or not. I really didn't care if I had the whole three and a half acres or not, but that's what you, I, he'll only sell it one way, and that's the way that I'm purchasing.
So if he made that corner lot the way that it is right now, it's not...
Doesn't have enough footage to get twenty thousand square feet.
Can't even melt building on it.
Yeah. And you can't now, either. I mean, even though it's attached to this, could you put something there?
It won't be the setbacks. Anything substantial. Shed.
Yeah, it's, I mean, you've got a hundred, yeah, tons of...
Yeah, thirty-foot front yard setback over there, along with the forty-foot rear yard setback over there, so you basically tie up that whole lot.
Yeah.
Or that whole corner.
Yeah, there's no way to build anything on it. It's just going to be green space, I guess.
This lot one owner, correct?
Yeah, well, Mr. Kramer.
You're the buyer.
I'm the buyer. He's the applicant, and he's requesting the subdivision and purchasing the property. The buyer is just going along with it because he's willing to sell the property. Or, I'm sorry, the owners.
So really, this is an action being requested by the owner of the property. He's looking to subdivide his property.
Please, acting on behalf of the owner.
Right.
The Simmermans were going to do a four-lot subdivision at one point in time, several years ago.
And actually, with that lot line there, it actually hinders that corner even more. If we move that lot line and get rid of it, the rear yard setback is no longer applicable, and you only have the thirty-foot front yard setback, so you could, in theory, put something at that corner if you don't have that property line. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely.
Well, it has two frontages, right?
It's a corner lot, so you'd have to have double the frontage.
So it has to meet the front setback on both sides.
Right.
But if this is gone, now you're only need the next one. But with that line there...
All the way up here.
Because now you have a rear yard setback, so now this is creating another setback in here, so that...
And it's all right now, turn around.
It's another problem. We're remembering a piece of property.
Well, the property owner doesn't want to do anything. He wants to keep it green space.
I agree with Steve. I scoured the code, looked for something that I could hang him up on, and there just isn't any. He needs the, it's a performing lot in that he has enough frontage on the town right-of-way. Yeah.
How about the four-to-one ratio thing? I know that's just a recommendation.
It's a recommendation, but it's...
Lot two meets the four-to-one.
Yeah, lot two meets, and so does lot one.
Lot one does?
Yeah, because you got to count the frontage along the fifty feet along the right-of-way, and then the two-hundred-and-thirteen feet, so, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's just, it's a performing lot. It's a very, very odd configuration that I've never seen anything quite like that, I don't think, in my career. Have you, Tim?
I have seen it one or two other times, but it's very odd. I tried to not do it. I purposely told Mr. Meyer that I didn't really think that was going to go very well, but the property owner said that he actually wanted it like this, so we put it like that.
Well, I mean, just, you know, things can happen. So you can get a district where they say, you know, you have to maintain your lawn, even though the town doesn't have that requirement. There are communities that have that, and he may be obligated to mow that in the future, and he's not going to want to. And so it's going to be a constant problem with the code enforcement office. Or, you know, someone's going to want to do something with it in the future, because it's setting out there as a corner lot, and they're going to argue, why do we let this corner lot set vacant with all this development around it? Can't we at least build something there we want to vary it?
Well, a property line can get adjusted. You can do a lot line adjustment with the current property line.
I'm just saying, this was a planning board.
I understand.
And it's poor planning. That's all.
But it's permitted.
I don't see any solution to that.
That's a problem.
We're stuck.
Yeah.
It's code.
I mean, the reality of it, by today's standards, none of these lots down on the river or whatever would be developed.
I'll read the letter from our town engineer. And for the record, Mayor Chairman Cory and Lysander Planning Board members completed my review of the final plat for the above-referenced minor subdivision prepared by Anazui Roman Slant Surveying PC dated April 30, 2024. The plat as presented appears to meet all of the Town of Lysander code requirements. I would not be opposed to the planning board approving the final plat at this time. This was not submitted to town. Findings. An environmental assessment indicates that this action will not result in any significant or adverse environmental impact. This action is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. This action is consistent with the town's current zoning ordinances. There is a letter on file prepared by Eli Agar Town Engineer dated July 11, 2024 that had been made part of the public record. This action did not meet the criteria for referral to the Onadaga County Planning Board because of less than three lots. This action will cause no adverse effects on public health, safety, and welfare in the neighborhood or district. Resolve, that a public hearing having been held and there being no findings or grounds for decision contrary to the laws and regulations of the Town of Lysander, County of Onadaga, State of New York, final plat approval for a two-lot subdivision by Michael Carone on behalf of Michael and Sharon Zimmerman for property located at eighty-seven forty-four Kramer Road, Boland Zoo, New York, tax map number zero-seven-seven dot dash zero-one dash two-three, as shown on a map dated April 30, 2024, prepared by Anazui Roman Slant Surveying, is hereby approved, and there are no conditions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So move. Resolve, that in granting a subdivision to Michael Carone for property located at eighty-seven forty-four Kramer Road, Boland Zoo, New York, tax map number zero-seven-seven dot dash zero-one dash two-three, the planning board invokes its right to impose a fee of two-hundred-and-fifty per lot for one lot and lieu of land for the development of parks, playgrounds, recreation, or open land areas in the town.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? So move. State law states that the applicant shall file the final plat in Onadaga County Clerk's Office within sixty-two days from the date of the final approval, or such approval shall expire. The applicant shall also file one copy of the final plat in the Lysander Clerk's Office.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next item on the list, this is information only. Mark Emmy, minor subdivision.
Yeah, I'm Joe. I'm Mr. Brother. He couldn't be here.
Okay.
Having an emergency, and this is all I could get off my phone. Was it sketch plan? I just wanted to...
We have the full-size plans.
What are you looking for? What are you looking for? Subdiving a piece of the property on our front and across the West Tennessee Road, down by the river. See if we can see, see if we can get it.
Since we don't allow flag lots, they want to come in off of South Ivy.
So the proposal is to break out this piece because I identify slot one? Yeah. Ranch here, this is part of town here. I don't know what the requirement is. He was looking to go up here. Came up to here. Yeah, South Ivy. South Ivy ends here. Brother Tony lives here. This is his lot, and then he was going to come through the fire here to get to that lot.
Who owns the easement?
It's not, as presented, it's not, it's not an approvable subdivision. You could ask for a variance, which I don't think would be granted. You could construct a public road, dedicate a public road to access the lot, and provide a cul-de-sac, but other than that, there's not really a way to approve that as presented.
Okay, so what was, if there was a public road?
If you wanted to construct a public road to town standards, dedicated to the town, you could do it.
It would be an expensive operation.
There would be an expensive operation, that is correct.
Well, does this, this easement is being proposed as part? Okay, it's not there now.
No, it's not there. I'm opposed to it.
He hasn't even, you know, no partners here, so we're, you know, we're all involved in whether it's something to buy or not, if it was to go, you know, he's...
I mean, you could ask for a variance, there's not a, you would not meet the requirements to get a variance, however.
And you would need a number of variants.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No road frontage.
Yeah, it's area, they're all area variances, but they're, it's just not an approvable...
It didn't seem like it was, yeah, he thought he pursued it, so.
Might be a question of where you're going to put your septic system, too. You're so close to the river.
Is that in the flow of the easement?
Yeah, part of it is, yeah.
There's a little footprint where he could have gotten private utilities, but...
Yeah, it's not a...
That's that old flag lot. Tony's house had a flag pole, and the Havers had a house off the flag pole, but now we don't allow those.
All right, this one, too. This one's frontage.
Yeah, but that was approved before the flag lot, flag lots were taken.
And he has access from the South Ivy.
Correct, yes. I mean, you could run a two-hundred-foot strip all the way out to...
You're right, yeah.
Out to three-seventy.
And still farm it, though?
Yeah, you could, you could still farm it, it just, you know...
He needs a two-hundred at the road and all the way down, though. He didn't want to give up that much land. But could you get it, just put a right-of-way there?
You don't have to have two-hundred foot all the way back. You have to have two-hundred foot back to the front yard setback.
Twelve-foot wide road.
You could have a fifteen-foot ride, yeah. So there is, you could get creative. I don't necessarily like it when people get creative.
I'm going to have him contact, so you can explain to him.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's...
Because I don't think this is going, but...
It's a stretch. I'll leave it at that.
I mean, if he can, if you can let him know...
I can let him know what the sections of code that he's up against, that, what he is trying to do as presented.
All right. Okay, prove that.
No problem.
All right.
Thank you.
I don't know what to do about that.
I think you're emailing them. He doesn't send a full-size one. I'll look and see if they've chimed out today.
Nobody said anything to me, so I don't know, because I was trying to state, Timbers didn't provide full-size drawings.
But there's table?
I know Mr. Tractor won't like it being tabled, however, he has not met the requirements of the application, so the board would be in its right to table it until next month.
Would you like?
Well, I mean, really, there's no, it's not a completed application, so the...
We really don't have anything to look at.
Correct.
Is Forest Ridge actually the correct address or road? Because that actually is the extension of Timber, Timber, Tall Tree Lane. I'm sorry, I figured this one out.
No, this is Forest Ridge.
This is an area that they're going out of that circle that they created, and that's Tall Tree in there.
Nope, Tall Tree comes around and tees into Forest Ridge in the circle.
So Forest Ridge comes and then goes around?
Correct.
So that it's going to go around, and it's going to go off of the around?
I'll show you.
I've driven it enough. I know what it looks like.
Yeah, we'll pull up a map after this.
There's no real road signs right now.
What do you guys think about?
But this is getting to be ridiculous, the amount of development you're doing back in there.
Well, it's allowed. It's going to be, I mean, they haven't come anywhere near what was approved, so...
It was approved, but with all public hearings afterwards. For every section they're opening up, is what I was told by Art Levy's wife, fifteen, twenty years ago, when I moved it, or 2010, when I moved the area.
That is not a correct statement. And I know Mr. Levy's wife, and I know Mr. Levy very well, and they're great people, but that is not a correct statement, because it's just like Radisson.
Whether we table it?
They open up and they just... And if they open up onto Patchit, what are you going to do then? Because Patchit can't handle the traffic.
Not anywhere near Patchit yet.
They're close.
Not, they're way...
For the purposes of...
Where their property is up.
For the purpose of the planning board, since we do not have the material that we need to schedule a public hearing, and following proper rules, we're going to table this until next month, when we have it, and then we'll schedule a public hearing.
Yeah, if the application wasn't delivered, the plans weren't...
Tell James, just get stuff to us when we need it.
No problem.
That concludes our agenda for tonight. I'll accept a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So move.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The same. Thank you, gentlemen.